This is a regularly scheduled public session of the Woodbridge Board of Education is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Clause of 1975, also known as Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by resolution adopted at the reorganization meeting held on January 3rd, 2023. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted in Woodbridge Borough Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, TapInto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education's website. Please be advised that all our portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. Roll call. Yes.
Here.
Yes. Here. Present. Tony, onto our presentations, recognitions, and awards.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to open up our Student of the Month recognition for October. Unfortunately, Ms. Schmidt could not be here this evening. I hope she feels better, number one, but I am also delighted to be able to present to my Doyle School students. Oh, Ms. Schmidt, when she writes, "Since October encompassed many school-wide initiatives and activities around the theme of kindness, grade-level teachers were asked to nominate a student on behalf of their respective grade that best embodies this important trait." The teachers wrote the following rationales for the students. Our first recipient in the kindergarten, I'm going to call her name and ask her to come up and say some nice things about her, in the kindergarten, Bella Cardahena. Here's what we're going to say about Bella. Bella is such a sweetheart. She goes above and beyond for all of her classmates. She always includes others. Bella likes to see her peers succeed and always gives them compliments. Congratulations, Bella. In the first grade, can I have Caleb Rennie come up? Is Caleb here? Okay, I will accept on behalf of Caleb, and I will read. Caleb is a hard-working, caring, and kind young boy. He does his best to help out in any and all situations in the classroom and on the playground. He is always showing his kindness by helping others, being a good friend, and working to cheer people up when they're feeling down. Caleb constantly shows the true definition of kindness through his actions, and that's Caleb Rennie, Grade 1. Now, Bella, you might know the second-grade person. Brielle Cardahena. You guys know each other? You know her? Okay. Here's what we have to say about you, Brielle. Brielle is a kind girl who is always willing to help others. She is respectful and exhibits amazing manners. She is always willing to share with her classmates. She chooses kindness every day, and I'm so proud to be her teacher. Brielle Cardahena. One more, one more. Last but not least, in my third grade, Mr. Jake Steed, could you come up? Jake is one of our third-grader leaders, and this is what the nice things we have to say about you. Jake exemplifies kindness daily with everything he does. He is considerate of his classmates and teachers and is always trying to help others and make them smile. Jake shows what it means to be kind every day, and I am so proud of him. Jake Steed. Now, unfortunately, Mr. Lisa, Mrs. Ruiz, and St. Clair, for a variety of reasons, could not be here this evening, but I'm going to ask Ms. Dudsack to take care of the intermediate school and high school on Erice. Thank you.
Good evening, all. I apologize, you're going to have to bear with me for grades 4 through 12. Being their former fifth-grade teacher, though, I am not surprised to see so many of these names on these lists. Starting with our intermediate school, Grade 4, Sparsh Gupta. Sparsh is a hard worker, always respectful and kind. He is always willing to help others, including his teachers. He enjoys school. In fact, when asked what he liked best about school, he couldn't really choose one thing. He likes all his classes and teachers and enjoys being with his friends. During his free time outside of school, he spends time playing outside with friends, playing soccer or video games, and free drawing. This student knows exactly what he wants to do when he grows up. He loves planes and wants to be a pilot. One person that this student considers a role model is his older brother. He says his brother always stands up for him and is always there to help him whenever he needs it. Congratulations to Sparsh, our fourth-grade Student of the Month for October 2023. Grade 5, Angelina Schreiber. Angelina is very responsible, respectful, and an overall great student. She was very excited and happy to hear the news that she was chosen to be the Student of the Month. When she found out that she was chosen, she said, "Oh, wow, thank you." She had a big smile on her face, very similar to the one you have right now, and was relieved to find out that she wasn't in trouble. Her favorite subject is ELA because she really enjoys reading. In her free time, she enjoys reading and drawing. She also enjoys dancing and would like to be a professional dancer when she grows up. Congratulations to our fifth-grade Student of the Month for October, Angelina Schreiber. Grade 6, Sonia Bazarelli. Sonia is outgoing, friendly, conscientious with her work, and always participates in class. She strives to do well and is just a pleasure to have in class. Sonia's favorite subject in school is math. She said math because I like working with numbers and learning about different properties and operations. Outside of her classes in school, she is part of Dr. T's Fine Arts Club and plays softball and soccer. Her role model is her mom because she does a lot for her and her older cousin. Her cousin is going to college for art and shows her all of her pieces. When she grows up, she would like to be an artist that paints. Congratulations to our sixth-grade Student of the Month for October, Sonia Bazarelli. Would you like me to keep going with 7 through 12 faith, or do you want their picture first? Good job, intermediate school. Now for our 7th through 12th graders. Seventh grade, Michaela Cruz. Michaela comes to class every day with a positive attitude. She's always outspoken in class when providing answers or during class discussions. She does everything needed to make sure she understands the material. She is extremely focused on getting A's. She's very good at asking for help when she needs it. She's respectful and pleasant. Michaela is a hard-working student who takes great pride in her work and her relationship with her classmates. Congratulations. Eighth grade, Stephanie Kim. Stephanie is a wonderful student. She is kind and in most cases puts other students first. Stephanie is a role model to all students. She's extremely respectful and cares about her education. She's always on task and often takes leadership roles during projects and labs. Stephanie has an extremely positive attitude even when faced with challenges in and outside of the classroom. Congratulations. Ninth grade, Tiziana Ricabono. It's okay, I can start reading. Tiziana always brings positivity into the room with her. Tiziana is an enthusiastic learner who actively participates in classroom discussions and displays a genuine passion for learning. She is a student who is very pleasant to be around, a person whose behavior and work habits serve as good examples to her peers. Tiziana will be successful in whatever challenges she meets because of her willingness to work hard, her responsibility, and her strong character. Congratulations. Tenth grade, Joao Matavelli. JP. JP is a respectful, hard-working, and helpful. When I need help, he is there to offer assistance. One of our students needs help with translating, and he takes it upon himself to help her since he is bilingual. He also always sits towards the front of the class and is engaged in class discussions. Overall, JP comes to class prepared and always comes to class with a positive attitude. His character overall is a model for other students to follow due to his respect, personality, and honesty. Congratulations. Eleventh grade, Jenna O'Connor. I will share what her teacher said about her. Jenna has been an impressive student since the first day of class. She repeatedly comes in, day after day, ready to work, and puts 100% effort into everything she submits. She has demonstrated consistently both in class and on assessments that she is actively paying attention and willing to contribute insightful viewpoints. Congratulations to Jenna. And finally, our 12th grade representative, Nashla Burrows. Her teacher said Nashla is extremely hard-working and driven to do well. Nashla is a truly gifted student that combines a pleasant disposition with a high level of cognitive abilities. She is patient and kind, as well as driven toward success. Nashla is kind, has great people skills, always willing to help others, conscientious, and a great student. She's a team player and a pleasure to have in class. Congratulations, Nashla. All right, 7 through 10, I hope you brought your files with you. Congratulations.
So Tony's going to come down for a couple more reports, but that was the exciting, really good stuff. So I'm going to give everybody maybe about a minute. If you want to leave at this time, you can get out. If not, you can stay and we'll go through our regular proceedings. So for everybody, happy holidays.
Good job, good job. Good job, Burrows. You're welcome.
All right. So Tony, onto our next set of reports.
Good evening. Both of our student representatives, because of their involvement in a variety of high school activities, could not attend this evening. However, they were conscientious enough to give me a report to read. The Woodbridge Junior-Senior High School kicked off November with a day trip to Philadelphia. Students had beautiful weather and enjoyed learning about all the history Philly has to offer. The ninth-grade peer mentoring program met twice in November. One of the sessions involved the ninth graders and seniors having fun together solving multiple riddles. Mr. Sinclair did an excellent job hosting our annual sports awards on November 16th. It was great to hear from all the coaches and honor our athletes. On November 30th, nine juniors and one senior were inducted into the National Honor Society. Shout-out to Mrs. Denopoli for putting together a great ceremony. December was kicked off with an honor roll breakfast. After marking period one, report cards were released. Mr. Sinclair and Mrs. Regusio Ruiz hosted a bagel and juice breakfast for any student that made the honor roll. For marking period one, we had a total of 186 students make the honor roll. On December 7th, the Bergen County Prosecutor, Mr. Mark Misella, and members of his office and the Black Poster Project came to speak with our ninth through 12th grade students on the dangers of fentanyl. We had two sessions, and it was very moving. If you're not familiar with it, the Black Poster Project, basically, the risers and the stage were covered with black posters with pictures of Bergen County students, young adults who lost their lives involved with drugs and alcohol. And parents have written poems and that type of thing. The children, after hearing from Mr. Misella and his staff about the dangers of fentanyl and how it's everywhere, and how they can't trust anything that they might believe to be something else, and he asked them to look at the children who were somewhere in their high school baseball, somewhere in their prom dress, somewhere at their graduation day. Those are the pictures that the participating families chose to show and provide an image, and it also detailed the struggles of each child. I have to commend our students. You could have heard a pin drop in this room. I believe the message was heard loud and clear. Mrs. Manalakakis and Mrs. Durba put on another great holiday concert on December 12th. Our band students, some of which picked up an instrument for the very first time in September, put on an amazing performance. Our choir and glee club sang their hearts out and had the crowd join them. Thank you to Il Velagio for hosting our senior holiday luncheon last week. The food was delicious, and all the seniors had a great time. This week is our winter spirit week at the high school with fun-themed days. We are ending our spirit week with a pep rally on Friday. There will also be a staff versus student volleyball game. In fall athletics, we finish strong through postseason play, and many student athletes earn individual postseason honors. Our winter teams are off to a great start. Girls' basketball is 2-0. Bowling is 3-0. Brandon DeMaze, one of our students, placed second in the Garfield Wrestling Tournament this past weekend. Our winter track team has set personal records already at the Bennett Indoor Bubble Meet, and our young basketball team for the boys is getting stronger each day, and we're looking forward to their improvement. That concludes the student representative report. I also, this evening, on behalf of Mr. Lisa, have to deliver two very important reports that are mandated by the state. The first is a statement to the Board of Education regarding the Student Safety Data System, SSDS, for the first reporting period. Good evening, members of the board. Today, I will present to you the data received submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education's Student Safety Data System. Under the SSDS, all incidents involving any types of suspension, in school or out of school, must be reported upon. In addition, any alleged and/or confirmed HIBs must be reported. During the second-half reporting period of the 2022-2023 school year, which runs from January 1 through June 31, 2023, the number of incidents reported to the Student Safety Data System for the district was 64. Split up as follows. For the Doyle School, one incident of violence. Also not included in that total were two incidents of alleged HIB, neither of which were founded. For the Intermediate School, nine incidents as follows. One incident of violence, two incidents of weapons, three confirmed HIB incidents. Also not included in the previous total was one incident of alleged HIB, which was not founded. In addition, there were three nonspecific incidents which led to some form of suspension in school or out of school. For the high school, there were 54 incidents as follows. Six incidents of violence, one incident of vandalism, one incident of substance possession, one confirmed HIB incident. Also not included in the previous total were eight incidents of alleged HIB, which were not founded. In addition to, 45 nonspecific incidents, which led to some form of suspension in school or out of school. Again, that is reporting period 2, January 1 through June 31, 2023. I also must report on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, ABR Self-Assessment. Tonight, I will present to you scores for our New Jersey School and District Report Card as part of the NJ DOE Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment. This data is unofficial and will be submitted to the Department of Education for their review and approval to be released as an official report card later in the school year. This report card, we posted on our district website, one's published by the Department of Education. Each building has an assessment team. The scores presented to you tonight are based upon what are known as the eight core elements, which consist of the following. One, programs, approaches, or other initiatives. Two, training on the Board of Ed-approved HIB policy. Three, other staff instruction and training programs. Four, curriculum and instruction on HIB and related information and skills. Five, HIB personnel. Six, school-level HIB incident reporting procedures. Seven, HIB investigations. And eight, HIB reporting. Within each core element lies a series of requirements that each school is scored upon using a rating scale of 0 to 3. 0 indicates the school did not meet requirements. 1 indicates the school partially met requirements. 2 indicates that the school met all requirements, and a score of 3 indicated that the school exceeded the requirements. With a maximum possible score of 78, the scores for each school were as follows. Doyle School, 67 of 78. The Intermediate School, 61 of 78. The Junior-Senior High School, 61 of 78. The district score of 63, which is the average of the three schools, indicates that the Woodbridge School District has officially met all requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, or ABR, as required by the Department of Education for the 2022-2023 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Trustees, comments, questions? All right. I will now take us to our Board Administrator's report.
...to the Google Cloud. The updated agreement will also save approximately 426 hours per month on the contract. Also on the agenda is approval of the office for our business clerk's receivable position, which will complete the revamping of our business office. I would also like to thank the Carfora family for their generous donations this year. And lastly, we have the approval of the submission of a district comprehensive maintenance plan, the yearly sufficient regarding the repairs and maintenance of our buildings. I would also like to wish our board members back and stick with us a wonderful holiday season, and as always, anyone from the staff or public has any questions, please do not hesitate to call my office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Trustees, any questions? All right, make our way to the superintendent report.
Okay, I'm sure that the board will be delighted to know that the students mentioned a great many of my points for my address, so I will be able to abbreviate this address. Congratulations to the Doyle School students and their music teacher, Mr. Charles Quotley, for their most recent winter concert performances held on two separate dates last week. The concert was conducted over the course of two mornings, which allowed for every audience member to have their own seat in a most comfortable environment. The children performed magnificently, and each grade level met the challenge of presenting three songs for their most appreciative audience members. Please do not forget that we have our Intermediate School Winter Concert, taking place this Wednesday evening right here in this auditorium, beginning at 6:00 PM. The Woodbridge Intermediate School Choir and Band will be performing. It is a wonderful sign of the growth of this program as we move the concert to this venue with a stage large enough to accommodate our growing performance groups. Good luck is wished to all of the participating students, as well as Mr. Grant Sipple and Mr. Charles Quotley, who lead the band and choir groups respectively. Special thanks go out to the Woodbridge Parent Advisory Network, under Mrs. Taylor's leadership, for sponsoring a STEM night for our special ed students on Wednesday, November 29th. Thank you to our high school students who volunteered to assist their younger friends in the completion of the projects for the evening. In athletics, we completed a most successful fall season, and I would like to mention some all-league recognition. Girls' soccer, First Team All-League, Leah Russo, Fiona Helly, and Ava Rizos. Second Team All-League, Allison Gardella and Isabella Drodis. Honorable mention, Gabrielle Dantez. Boys' soccer, First Team All-League, Salvador Cantanzaro, Brian Harisek, Marcelo Avila, and Steven Touri. Second Team All-League, Anthony Kala, Josue Telom, and Chase LaPresti. Honorable mention, Lucas Mendoza. In addition to Second Team All-County, Salvador Cantanzaro, and congratulations to our coach, Alberico DiPiero, who was voted Coach of the Year of the Meadowlands Division. In volleyball, First Team All-League, Nicole Sawicki and Brielle Rivera. Second Team All-League, Ava Gravina and Jaslyn Mercado. Honorable mention, Alana Ambrosio. In football, First Team All-League, Jaden Punt, James Masucci, Kalidi Elazaj, Michael Marchatelli, Antonio Loyola Ben Lopez. Second Team, Aiden Kelly, Nick Scalera, Shawn Fernandez, Melvin Zabaleta, Michael Prado. Honorable mention, Nicholas Mabel. Second Team All-County, Antonio Loyola. Regarding tonight's agenda, you will note some of the resolution items this evening are being approved retroactively due to cancellation of our late November meeting. We are approving Ms. Giaquinto tonight as a leave replacement for Mrs. Pap in our eighth grade English classes. Ms. G started today, we wish her well. We have been able to designate an additional stipend for our Doyle School Citizenship Club, and this will enable a greater rate of participation for our attending students. We are approving some projected leaves of absence this evening, and we'll advertise these positions before the winter break. We are approving a great number of policies and regulations on second reading this evening. In finance, as Mr. Morelli alluded to earlier, we're accepting donations from the Carfora family here in Woodbridge. The Carforas have been very generous in helping to support the theater program at the high school, the arts program at Doyle and the intermediate schools, as well as their donation to the district for security measures. On behalf of the Board of Education, our staff, and our students, I wish to thank the Carfora family for their support. I'd be remiss if I did not recognize the efforts of our outgoing Board of Ed member, Mr. Dylan O'Byrne. Mr. O'Byrne is a former student of mine, and I'm so proud of his willingness to give back to his community. Mr. O'Byrne is an advocate for all students, a true blue devil, and I wish him nothing but great things in the future. A reminder that all of our schools will observe a one-session day this Friday, December 22nd. Doyle and Intermediate School will dismiss that 12:28 PM. Doyle and Intermediate School will dismiss that twelve-twenty-eight P.M., and the high school will dismiss that twelve-thirteen P.M. I want to wish all of the school district community members happy holidays and a happy new year. We look forward to welcoming our students back to school on Tuesday, January second, twenty-twenty-four. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tony. I thought you said it was going to be shorter. Anyway, questions or comments? Mr. Tony? We're good, we're good? All right. Approval of the minutes upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of the Board of Education approve minutes of the following meeting, public session meeting, November sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Can I get it first? So, O'Burn, Mr. Garvin, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Biemonte?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything for new business to discuss tonight? No? No? All right, so I'm going to open it up to the hearing of citizens on the resolutions only.
Okay. Bonnie Taylor, sixty-four Woodbridge Street. I had a question for Mr. Biemonte as the Personnel Chair. Why are our powers being paid at different rates when they are working the same amount of hours?
Similar to a teacher's contract, the paraprofessionals are also included in that contract, and they have a salary guide based upon their years of experience.
Okay, so our powers are on this, on our contracts, just clarify. Okay. Also, in regards to the new policies, again, that link was not accessible to the public, so we have to make that public prior to meetings so that we can review them, and we're knowledgeable about that. And then, my final question was in regards to the maintenance report. I'm sorry, where is it? It says it's a detachment, however, we don't have any numbers, we don't have any guidelines, what properties, what facilities, what is being maintained, what's the number that we're looking at? I think the public would like to know exactly what we're looking at. Do you have a number for us?
I was having a little trouble hearing the exact question. If you could respond, yeah, if you could please repeat it? Thank you. Yes. Okay. Okay. So, I have it here on the screen, on my screen right now, and I don't, I guess I can't share it with everyone here. So basically, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is the year-by-year breakdown of what we're spending for repairs and maintenance on our buildings, and then it leads to the future of budgeting for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. repairing the walls, painting, repairing the door frames, cleaning of drains, repairing of roofs, repairing of walls, maintaining the boilers, HVAC units, all of our mechanics that have to, you know, with our buildings. It's a steady increase of money that's spent each year, and to give you an idea, the actual twenty-two, twenty-three school year amounted to a little under three-hundred thousand dollars, and then we wound up up to it up to about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the newly budgeted amount settled for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So it's a steady increase of what things are costing traditionally.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I assume that you have an itemized list that we, the public can access, which schools are in more repair than the others, especially with new construction going on?
Once the county approves it, we will post it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Actually, Carl, I think that was a good question. One of the things I, maybe we could talk, we'll talk about offline, but I'd actually like to know how we've been trending over the past five years, to see how those increments are with the change in costs has been. Not now, I'll come to your office.
I can share that with you, then we can go over it.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Hearing none, seeing none? Carl, do we have any submissions?
Just the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan with the approval, tonight will be submitted to the House.
Okay. All right, I will close the hearing of citizens on resolutions only. Trustees, I will read through our committee reports. Let's change it up tonight. Curriculum instruction, approval and evaluation requests, approval of annual WRIS turkey trot, approval of the home instruction, approval to terminate out of district placement transportation, ten PHP placement, approval of the amended related services, approval of field trip requests, approval of student-teacher classroom observation, field experience internship, approval of home instruction, approval of the student-teacher classroom observation, field experience internship, approval of out-of-district placements. Onto personnel, we have approval of the CED, Sixth Period Teaching Stipend, twenty-three, twenty-four, which is a correction. We have approval of personnel appointment, another one which includes Moonaki, approval of a chaperone for Moonaki, another one for Woodbridge only. Approval of mentor revision from September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, approval of appointment of care personnel, twenty-three, twenty-four, approval of the new job description. Approval of appointment of long-term replacement substitute, approval of Doyle co-curricular appointments for twenty-three, twenty-four school year revised, approval of district social worker therapist, which includes Moonaki, next one does as well, approval of appointment of substitute, approval of request for leave of absence, this includes Moonaki, approval of a coaching appointment, approval of professional development request. For policy, we have two, both include Moonaki, approval of policies and approval of regulations, none for buildings and grounds at this time. Finance, we have approval of the bills list, approval of the fundraiser, approval of another fundraiser, approval of disposal of equipment, that includes Moonaki, approval of acceptance of donation, that also includes Moonaki. For board operations, we have affirmation of Superintendent's Report of Incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, otherwise known as HIB within the district. We have approval of the request to invoke district sick bank. We have approval of use of sick bank days. Then we have approval of the revision of the Woodbridge Safe Return and Continuity Service Plan, approval of a one-year agreement with Care Plus Bergen, Inc. for services rendered in the Teen Thrive Program, Substance Abuse Referral Program, approval of delayed opening at the high school for NJSLA testing. We have approval of submission of a comprehensive maintenance plan, which we just discussed, and approval of an agreement with Bergen County Department of Health Services for Bloodborne Pathogens Program twenty-three through twenty-five. That's twenty-five or twenty-four, is that?
Short answer.
Okay. And lastly, oh no, approval of updated agreement with Atlantic Tomorrow's Office, and we do have a walk-on, which is Board Operations ten now. That's the affirmation of the Superintendent's Report of Incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying within the district. Do I have any questions, comments, or concerns from the Board? Nope, we're all good? All right. Trustees, which includes Moonaki, looking for your support, curriculum and instruction, six, seven, and eight. That's approval of the field trip request, approval of student-teacher classroom observation, field experience internship, and the home instruction. Personnel, three, four, eight, eleven, twelve, and fourteen, which is approval of personnel appointment, chaperone, new job description, district social worker therapist, appointment of a substitute and a coaching appointment. Policy one and two, which is approval of policies and regulations, none for buildings and grounds. Finance, one, two, four, and five, which is the approval of the bills list, approval of fundraiser, approval of disposable, disposal of equipment, and acceptance of donation. Board Operations, one, two, three, four, five through nine, Board Operations, affirmation of Superintendent's Report of Incidents of HIB, approval of request to invoke district sick bank, then to use those sick bank days, approval of the revision of the Woodbridge Safe Return and Continuity Service Plan, approval of one-year agreement with Care Bergen, Care Plus Bergen, Inc. for services rendered in the Teen Thrive Program, approval of a delayed opening at the high school for NJSLA testing, approval of submission of Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, approval of the agreement with Bergen County Department of Health Services for Bloodborne Pathogens, twenty-three, twenty-five, approval of the updated agreement with Atlantic Tomorrow Office, and our walk-on, which is the affirmation of Superintendent's Report of HIB within the district. Trustees, can I get it first? Fallon, so, O'Burn, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Biemonte?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, trustees, looking for your support, which is Woodbridge only, curriculum instruction, one, two, three, four, five, and nine, that is the evaluation requests, the Intermediate School Turkey Trot, home instruction, terminate out-of-district placement transportation, ten PHP placement, amend related services, student-teacher classroom observation, field experience internship, out-of-district placement. Personnel, one, two, five through seven, nine, ten, thirteen, and fifteen. We have the Doyle Sixth Period Teaching Stipend Correction for twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a personnel appointment, approval of a chaperone, or the approval of mentor revision from September eighteenth this year, approval of appointment of care personnel for twenty-three, twenty-four. We have appointment of a long-term replacement substitute, we have Doyle co-curricular appointments for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which has been revised. We have the request for leave of absence and a professional development request, none for policy, none for buildings and grounds, and one for finance, which is the approval of fundraiser. Trustees, looking for your support. Mr. Biemonte, Mr. Fallon, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Biemonte?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustees, any final comments, concerns, or questions? We're good? All right, I'm going to open it up to the hearing of citizens and anything I'd like to speak about.
Bonnie Taylor, sixty-four Woodbridge Street. To our Business Administrator, at the eleven-sixteen meeting, we approved the Profit Tank. Can you give us any updates on some savings that you've discovered through this program that we've initiated in the district?
I think I could. You want me to answer that, Carl? You got it?
We can go.
So, the Profit Tank is a organization that we've been working with that will actually review all of our bills, anything that's really non-curriculum associated, it'll be things like infrastructure costs, home bills. They're in the process of actually reviewing all of our bills and finding out where there's efficiencies, where we might be able to negotiate contracts, et cetera. So they're still in assessment, and we haven't received, I mean, there's been dialogue back and forth that I know that I'm CC'd on, but we haven't received a final proposal back from them where we can find efficiency.
Okay, thank you. And then, at the past meeting on eleven-sixteen, we approved an unaffiliated Assistant Athletic Director for a twelve-month position. Can we just explain what unaffiliated means to the district?
So, we're talking about Charlie.
That position is not, number one, it's not an administrator, it's an assistant to the athletic director, and it's not a part of the Woodbridge, neither the Woodbridge Education Association nor the Woodbridge Administrators Association, therefore, it's unaffiliated status. It's an independent.
Okay, and was this position available to the public to apply for?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and do we have a job description for this position?
It was approved at either one or two meetings prior.
Okay, and the working hours for this position?
Working hours are within the athletic competition hours for the school district.
Okay, so my question then is to the Board, I have an employee that was originally a site manager, then was moved into a position that sounds almost administrative, given a nine-thousand-dollar raise, but is also being paid by the mayor and council to be a site manager at the same time. So I want to make sure that this employee isn't overlapping on their hours that they're receiving within the township.
No, yeah, no, I'll address it, and you can correct me. So, our facilities that are in use by the high school are not ever in use by recreation, right? So, what Mr. Trent Acosta will be doing down there is actually site administration for the high school, and that can be for Fourteenth Street, which we rarely use, anything that happens down at the rack, anything that happens at this field, again, high school, which would include middle school basketball, middle school basketball and volleyball, as well as any of the events that partake as far as, you know, in our, in our gym. What he's paid for by mayor and council is for everything that would be Little League softball that takes place on any of those fields. So there is no overlap because there's only one field really to be used at a time, especially for like softball, football, et cetera, soccer. So, just reassuring you that there is no overlap. They pay him for something that is similar, we pay him for something else. The other thing that we do is there's also some scheduling and other, well, I say, athletic director governed and, and talked to and directed by Mark, that will go to Charlie, that has nothing to do with mayor and council as well.
Okay, so is there, so what you're saying is, what I understand from an athletic director assistant, then it's going to be a three o'clock to an eight o'clock position, is that correct? Earnings?
Well, it's, it could be three o'clock to eight o'clock unless it's during the break, like when we have our basketball tournament here. It also goes directly through the summer. So, he will be, I'll give you an example, when we have softball and our varsity girls are actually playing, Charlie will need to be there on a Saturday or Sunday night in June, July as site administration for us.
And, and this new change in title, does this entitle the employee to health benefits?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything you wanted to add to that?
No, the only thing I wanted to add, the employee had a different position last year, if the Board will recall, with Mr. Soro's resignation, we realigned our high school administrative team, effectively reduced one assistant principal, and it was my recommendation that we try to help Mitto Sinclair in his new role as assistant principal athletic director, taking on more observations with the loss of that position. We high, we, we tried, created a job description that added more responsibilities to the former athletic site director, including the collection of money, the accounting of money to give to Mitto Sinclair, the confirmation of officials, the confirmation of transportation. He's moved more from the actual management of the competition site to making sure that the competition can take place, as well as managing the site and doing the post-reporting afterwards.
Anybody else? All right, I'll close the hearing of citizens, everyone in the audience. Mr. Morelli, anything submitted today? Any questions?
No, we, no questions today.
Thank you, sir. I'll close the hearing of citizens. Before we close, first, happy holidays for everybody online, everybody that's here, be safe. Thank you to both Bonnie and Michelle, you know, for, for running. I think it's always good to have more in the mix, and I appreciate where you're all coming from and what you want to contribute. Michelle, congratulate, congratulations on the win. We will see you here on January second, as long as your fingerprints, no, we already know that those are good, I know. And Dylan, I, I don't even know how to start, but do you remember when you first got here, about the two hours we would spend almost, you know, a couple of days a week going over things and stuff like that? I'll actually say, believe it or not, I'm going to miss that, you know? I know it kind of tailed off a little bit at the end, but you did deliver on some of the things you spoke about, challenging the status quo, asking a lot of questions, like I said, especially at the beginning, when you and I would go over policy and stuff like that. So, I know this is an early exit for you, right? And there's, there's other things that come up, like for all of us in life, but I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for being part of the Board for the past three years. Anybody else's comments?
Mr. O'Burn, I, I really do appreciate your efforts, I really think you've had a positive impact, at least on this Board and on the district also, so all the best to you.
Mr. O'Burn, it was great working with you, we had a very good relationship, you brought a lot to the table, you helped us think things through and make, make things better for this district, thank you.
Hey, Dylan, I just want to wish you the best of luck, you went from my dear student to my colleague, so I really appreciate the relationship that we formed over the last several...